It's seven o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order, please. We are missing Steph Ritter this evening, and she is traveling on family business and will not be joining us this evening. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Right. Adoption of the agenda is our first item on the agenda this evening. If I could have a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
Mr. Light, and a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the next is the adoption of minutes from the meeting. Our most recent meeting.
Yeah, I had one comment on that. I didn't quite know how to adjust it, but the reference to Mr. Shuland's motion to approve with clarification of the number of residents didn't really say what we clarified it to say.
Should be more clarified.
Yeah, right. The fact that we clarified it, but don't say what we clarified it to be, but I didn't know the exact answer.
So which section is that? Not the ZANG first one?
I think it's the first one at the end.
The PATC? No?
Nope, the one...
The ALIFs.
Mr. Shuland recommended approval clarification of the number of guests, but we don't say, like, clarification that the number of guests be limited to ten or whatever, so I...it seems like there's something important missing from the motion, and maybe it's captured elsewhere.
Is there additional detail from the vote sheet, Ms. Summers?
Um, sorry, I was having to adjust the microphone. Um, yeah, we can clean that up, and then if you...we leave these minutes to the next meeting.
And does that work for everybody?
Works for me.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I wasn't able to anymore clear on what I think it should be.
And then, I was alerted that there is a typo at the end of page two, but I think staff have received that email also, so that can be cleaned up.
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll put those off till next month, then. That takes us to the first item of the evening, the Forgotten Creek Agricultural and Forested District. At this time, would you care to queue this up for us, please, Ms. Summers?
Yes, thank you. Landowners in the Jackson District have made application for the creation of a new ag and parcel district, the Forgotten Creek District, with a total of 371 acres comprised of eight parcels and five landowners. The advisory committee met just prior to this meeting, this evening, at 6:00 p.m., to review the application and to make a recommendation. They've recommended approval by vote of six to zero of the district with...there was two resolutions attached to this item on board docs. It was the...they recommended approval of the ordinance as requested with a two-year holding limitation for family divisions. The planning commission will need to consider their recommendation and hear from the public and make its recommendation to the board supervisors, which will also hold a public hearing at their December 2 meeting. This public hearing was advertised pursuant to state code. The applicants were notified as well as the adjoining property of these hearings, and the applicants are still present for the commission if they have any questions.
Would the applicants like to add anything at this time? Okay, well, then, we have a public hearing advertised this evening, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this Forgotten Creek Agricultural and Forested District. Anyone that would like to address this topic at this time, please come to the microphone and address the commission by your...with your name and the district in which you reside. And if you could keep your comments to three to five minutes, that would be great. So this public hearing is open for anyone that would like to speak on the Forgotten Creek Agricultural and Forested District. Being no one wishing to speak on this matter, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and defer to my fellow commissioners and the applicants.
So, yeah?
Absolutely.
I don't know that I've had one of these new ones before, but I think that the one question to me that seemed to be at some relevance here is the difference between the typical ordinance governing this and what's been proposed. And my attention was specifically drawn to item C in the proposed language, referring to Section 15, 2-4, 309, that we shall not prohibit...the county shall not prohibit as more intensive use construction or placement of dwellings for persons who earn a substantial part of their living. This seems to replace language about family subdivision and subdivision, and I guess I...there was no context for why that language would be shifted, so I don't know if someone could clarify that, if the applicant, but is this just clarification to be consistent with the current version of relevant code? That was my only kind of question.
No, please.
I'm sorry, would you mind using the microphone so we capture it for the minutes?
Page's Glenny Jackson District. The...what do you want, the previous conditions or the classic conditions, prohibited family divisions? And we want family divisions because we want to keep the land in agriculture, and we think that is the purpose of family divisions. And so, I'm having a hard time understanding how a family division hurts agriculture when that's what family divisions were created for. So, we just went through all this discussion in the committee meeting as well, all right? Hate to try and repeat myself, trying to...what else did we have to talk about? So, that's the primary difference. The first condition also got...because goes in the...so, when we wrote that, we pulled the language out of the state code, all right?
Okay, so that's...
That's where that language came from. Same with the...in the first condition, we pulled all that language out of the state code, out of the ag tourism, and I forget what the other section is off the top of my head.
Okay.
That's where that language came from.
And this was...sorry, can I ask you, this was the topic of the committee of the committee review?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I wanted to clarify there.
I liked that the committee did flirt with the idea of noodling with the two-year requirement for family subdivision and conveying the property after a family subdivision, extending it from two years to five years. I think it should be county-wide thing, and I don't want to...I think it's a perfect opportunity to kind of crowbar in my agenda of making ten years to coincide with what Falcare does, but I don't think it's appropriate at this time. I'd rather see it done on a county-wide basis. I was sure two years was way too short, but I think that was basically the biggest hook-up, hand that the committee had wrestled with.
That is...that was the subject of most of the discussion at the meeting preceding this meeting, and the bottom line is, there were three people on that committee, plus I joined them, and then the other two members joined us. And those three folks that felt that they should, you know, being included in an ag and forested district, have the same kind of property rights for family division as folks not in an ag and forested district, and that people that generally pursue ag and forested districts have good intentions and high ideas in mind. And so, does it make sense to impose additional standards, which could be punitive, on the people pursuing those applications? And we did not find that lengthening the two years was something we could all support.
But I think one of the other points that they brought up was about consistency among other agricultural and forest districts that don't have this ability for family subdivision. And I kind of like where they settled, saying they have the opportunity to pull their property out, do a family subdivision, or when they come back up for review for ten years or four years or whatever, then they can seek the same kind of opportunities for family subdivisions that Forgotten Creek's looking for.
Yes, and to my mind, it was a question of if we're not averse to the conditions, if we think they're reasonable conditions, it's got to start somewhere, because they don't all happen at the same time. So this applicant is as good a place as any to start to move the needle, and then if other districts want to change their terms at a later time, they have the ability to do so. Or they maybe could pull out, we'll have to talk to the county attorney, they may be able to stop what they have in place now and reapply with new conditions. I would imagine they can do that, but...do you know, Gary?
If they get asked to withdraw an ag or a...the body adopted an ordinance that's enforced for ten years and less than until the body takes action, that ordinance was.
Okay.
So as I understand it, in our ordinance, the family divisions are...you got to hold for five years, right?
Two.
It's two.
Two.
Five. After you do the division, it's five?
Not after.
Two.
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 Only two?
After the division.
After the division, because you got to hold it for five years before you can do the division.
You have to...
That means you buy the property initially, you have to wait five years.
Yes.
You got to hold it for five before you can do division, and you hold them on for two.
Yes.
And then you can do one every year after the five years.
So under this proposal here, you can do one for two years, hold it for two, just like the ordinance?
Yes.
So if somebody buys a property that's in the district, are they still going to have to wait five before they can do it, ordinance? Do they have to do a lot to hold for two? Or is this a circumvent of that?
No, I don't believe it's a circumvent in any way.
I know we...I brought it up and went to the family subdivision part, but the part of this that is more confusing to me is the part not seemingly related, but to the family division, but the construction and placement of dwellings for persons who earn a substantial part of their livelihood from farm or forestry operations. Is that potentially allowing a lot more dwellings on the same parcel? Is that...I mean, that was the piece of this that was most surprising to me, the...and it's...I don't know if this is straight from the quote, it's, I see, it's in the middle of that one, that shall not prohibit as more intensive use construction and placement of dwellings for person who...persons who earn a substantial part of their livelihood from a farm or forestry operation on the same property. First of all, I'm not sure what substantial means, but I don't know, I could read that as you can build, make dwellings as you want, and someone's earning some living on there? I don't know, I didn't mean to open a can of worms, that just struck me as odd language. I don't know if you can clarify that?
Copy the state code.
That is straight from the state code.
I assume they're talking about...
Like positioning.
Worker positions, like caretaker houses.
Mr. Curry, do you have anything to add to that?
Let me just read the code. So, Section B of the...so Section B is the section of creating these, says the governing body may require, as a condition to creation of the district, that any parcel in the district shall not, without the prior approval of the governing body, be developed to any more intensive use or to certain more intensive uses other than those...other than those uses resulting in more intensive agricultural or forestal production during the period in which the parcel remains within the district. Local governing bodies shall not prohibit as a more intensive use, construction and placement of dwellings for persons who earn a substantial part of their livelihood from a farm or forestry operation on the same property or members got to.
Okay, so that is the straight language, wherever it means.
To be clear, the planning commission can recommend and the board supervisors can adopt any ordinance they want, but the state code prevents.
Yeah.
And so, none of these words need to go into the ordinance. It's already there, right? Now, what I think is the saying is that that conditions can be placed restricting certain uses, but of those conditions that are placed, they cannot include restrictions that aren't in place everywhere else.
Right.
That would affect the person's ability to build a house for a farm. We already have a restriction setting, you get one dwelling for 25 acres, you can't just build a second dwelling for your tenant house unless you come to ask for special exception for a second dwelling at 25 acres. You can subdivide the parcel, and that's what you said before, to a density that doesn't follow your required density if it qualifies as a family division.
Right.
The other ag forested districts, the individuals waive that right in exchange for having tenure protection of this ordinance. But as the discussion has carried on earlier in this meeting, maybe that's not required, maybe the family divisions have benefit to preserving agriculture, and that's the debate that is happening.
Yeah, well, thank you for that. I, again, I'm not really trying to be difficult, I just find that I'm not zeroed in on that language. It's not quite clear to me where that...where...how that language in the state code would affect our density requirements for dwelling units on a single property. And I'm not sure what you just said clarifies it for me.
I don't think it would. I think what this body should, can, but you're not going to make any law. What the board supervisors can't do is include a condition that restricts greater than nor as otherwise applies those types of structures for a farm.
Right, so the question of how those things would apply, and if they ever met this, would be the same whether we had this in or not.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
So, who wrote this? Did you write this?
Yeah.
You wrote the whole thing?
What?
You wrote the whole thing?
Yeah, pretty much with help.
Helped with who?
I was the original rapper, yes.
Did our county attorney, you hear?
Did your county attorney see it?
Yeah.
He's been copying one emails. I haven't seen any response.
He might have input.
I mean, I would hope we would have a review, since we're changing the standard template for the ordinance, I would hope.
Well, the board knows what's going to happen. This is the application of what the applicants have requested, and so the board can adopt that. Now, if the county attorney thinks that there's certain things that are not clearly forcible or something, I guess getting the board to treat that.
To clarify, our ordinance does not give a standard template for conditions. They're just the conditions that go on.
On the other eight, yeah.
However, they got there.
Yeah, no, I get that, that's how most of these things evolve, but, you know, but anyway, I don't need to prolong this.
Well, I would just say that I've always been interested in ag and forestals and the level of protection that they provide, and it seems like people get into them, and then they realize later that, wow, I got something here, maybe I didn't realize what I was doing, but they're taken very seriously in most of the jurisdictions that I've seen. And it bothers me a little bit that we're passing on something, one up the chain, that hasn't gotten a silver approval from our county attorney, so I feel maybe it's good to have it here tonight, but I really think it, before I want to say yes to it, that Mr. Golf says it's okay, and instead of sending it to the board, and then he looks at it at the board level and has a comment that has to be changed, so I don't want to push a document along that I think is serious and has land use implications to it, that it's been written by a citizen and becomes policy, and it's recorded, and we have it in prosperity to deal with that.
I mean, what's the right way to effect that? I mean, for us to pass it on with that condition, or I don't want to put words or recommendations in your mouth, but I'm not sure how to...I feel kind of the same way, this seems like it's more of a attorney legal issue than zoning practice. I mean, obviously, we want to support these kinds of things, but I don't feel comfortable with that level of granularity, changing those...that regulatory language, and then without that...
I think we just hold off for a month and give the county attorney a chance to bless it and come back next month with it. I mean, it's not like it's a...something's going to change in this area, or it's needed to be done right away to close a loophole, so...
Well, I would...I think I would go along with that, but I'm curious what others think.
I like the idea of having him look at it. I mean, having...I'm out here almost every day, and I see a lot of the verbiage that comes back, and it's always better to have him look at it first. I know he's been out, he's had some other issues, he's been out for a while, so I'm not even sure if you've seen your emails, but I think like Mr. Henry said, you know, waiting a month, just table it until a month, I think, to give him an opportunity, if he hasn't seen it, to look at it. If he says it's all great, then you can go from there, but I think the one month, I think is not too much. I know it is for you, you probably want to get it moving, but I think at this point, I would be fine with waiting as well.
Is that a motion?
If you want a motion, I made a motion that we table it for a month to give the county attorney an opportunity to give us the opinion that this is an acceptable document to implement as the land use regulations district for Forgotten Creek.
I will second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I would just say, does the motion include recommendations for alterations to the document if there's anything that's not up to par?
I guess he can come back, number one, and say if something's not correct and do nothing, or he can make suggestions of how to...
And it sounds like you're implying some recommendation or some...
An edit.
Something from...
Lack of a better word.
Yeah, or confirmation. I mean, I'm not assuming that he's going to find anything wrong with it, it just feels like it's more in that domain than in ours at this stage.
Okay.
If there are changes, how soon, how long before the meeting do the applicants get to see the changes?
Yeah, right.
So whenever he gets done with it, I guess he'll give it to Michelle, and she can make it available.
If it's substantial, do we have to go through this process again? They go back to the board?
That's not clear to me, but from a schedule perspective, I think what will have to happen is the board supervisors' public hearing, just have to advertise that only after the planning commission finishes, or I don't want to prospectively advertise it again before January, and then maybe you don't sort it out.
Or maybe there's no substantive changes, and we can just pass it on.
Right, yeah.
But then, you know, we've already paid for the act one, I don't want to pay for the three seconds.
From your lips to God's ears, Gary. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I guess just for my clarification, is there any way that if this is passed on to the attorney, and he approves it, says everything is go, is it some way that it does not have to come, if this motion was we make, that we say that if he says it's go, it does not have to come?
Is that a motion for recommended approval contingent now except if being kind of accepted by the county attorney?
If you want to amend that, Mr. ...I want to go ahead and do it, that's fine. Just need a set of eyes on it.
Okay. So it sounds like we have a friendly amendment to send it on to the board supervisors pending review by the county attorney and review by the board supervisors before advertisement.
Sounds good. It's advertised for several seconds, so...
The public hearing's already advertised?
Yeah. But if he's good, if the county attorney's good, you roll right through.
And this is for...
If he's not, it's going to come back close anyways, and then the schedules...
And if it's not, it shouldn't be there anyway.
Right.
Correct, and this is for the version as requested? Right, okay. And Mr. Light, you have a second still in place?
I'm fine.
All right, is there any further discussion?
Did we close the public hearing?
I thought I did.
I thought you did.
Mr. Light usually helps me out with that. All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. You all are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you like. That takes us on to the next item of the evening, zoning ordinance amendment on contractors' yards.
Amendments 170-8 and additional standards 17066B. Just to highlight some of the amendments, the minimum watch size shall be 10 acre, minimum yard requirements 250 feet front, side, and rear. Materials, goods, supplies, parts, vehicles found on site must be limited to things that are customarily used in a contractor's ordinary course of business. All materials, goods, or supplies stored or found must be fit for their use. No junk or inoperable vehicles or inoperable equipment may be stored on site. The combination of vehicles and pieces of equipment stored on site must be appropriate for the particular site when considering their type and number, basically leaving it up to the commission and the board supervisors as a condition for a site-specific application. Parking, loading, screen for public right of ways and neighboring properties. Total area covered by outdoor stores not to exceed 20,000 square feet. The applicant...applications shall include a light, noise, dust, fume, smoke mitigation plan, as well as a plan for on-site fire suppression and chemical spills. The total area covered by all structures used in connection shall not exceed 10,000 square feet. Cannot be opened to the public or to customers unless authorized and a special exception. A traffic management plan, including number and types of vehicles, the road geometry, shall be submitted for the site to ensure sufficiently two-way traffic. Any entrance to the site must be adequate and to not impede the flow of traffic, and proof of a valid contractor's license. This amendment has been advertised by state code or pursuant to state code 15.222.04 for two consecutive weeks and made available for review processance.
Thank you, Ms. Summers. And we do have a public hearing advertised on this this evening, so at this point, I'll open up the public hearing on the zoning ordinance amendment regarding contractors' yards. Anyone wishing to speak, please address the commission at the microphone at this time. Yes, Karen.
Karen Hunt, Jackson District. I don't have any prepared...don't have any prepared remarks, but I've talked a bit before about there's now no number limit specifying the number of items that can be on there. I know that there was discussion on the planning commission about that, but that's leaving me with a little uncomfortable feeling. The other part that I've discussed and provided information to the planning commission before has to do with... has to do with the consideration of size and scope of vehicles. This is done in many other jurisdictions, and I know that the planning commission's feeling was that this would be addressed on an application-by-application business, you know, in that way, but I really feel it might bear some discussion. Sometimes when we don't consider these things more in the context when we write the ordinance, we saddle the community and staff and the planning commission and the board with a lot more of a vetting process. So I just urge you to give some more thought to some sort of parameters there and also the height requirement. Thanks.
Thanks, Karen. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, John Cepioli from Hampton. I'm sorry I missed the last meeting, I was out of town. It sounds like you've made huge progress on having the 10 acres and instead of having the three different sizes and appropriate vehicles and having a contractor's license and obviously that would go with the insurance and things like that, hazmat, looking at hazmat and fire codes and distances from other properties. I applaud you all. I only heard one little thing, which was about, and it's not a little thing, but about equipment being broken. I've got, right this minute, I have two mini skid stairs that are broken. I blew a hydraulic line in the tract, we had to pick it up with a machine and put it on a trailer and bring it home. I have another one that has blown a gear drive and the parts are eight to 12 weeks for me to get them. Would this mean that I would be in violation of the permit while I waited for these parts? Or I'm restoring two classic Kenworth tractors that I have antique plates on. I have 1.3 million miles on one. My son is trying to do another one and we bought a third one for parts. Does that mean that that would be in violation of this? They're not for our construction business, they're not registered for our construction business, they're registered as personal vehicles, as antique vehicles. They do not, this one's an 85, the other's an 88. They don't register them commercially, they just register them to the individual. Are these things that would fall under that inoperable vehicle classification? These are some of the little things that are in there that I'm curious about and make a difference to all of us. I don't think there's a contractor in any place that doesn't have something that's broken, something that he's bought and plans on fixing or has bought for parts because you can't find them anymore. And if my farming equipment, it's the same issue. I know lots of other people that have farm equipment that they don't use any longer or they hope to use when the time is right. And with that, I know that there is a coverage in the code that allows that as long as it's at the back of the property and it's not visible from the street, so on and so forth. Would that, or could that, or should that be considered in this? Thank you.
Thanks, John. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time?
Paige Glenny, Jackson District. I commend you all, I think the requirements are very good. My question is, how are they applied? I know of a number of companies that are operating that probably never got a permit, they don't meet these requirements, all right? Are you intending that they have to come in and get a permit and they have to comply with all this? If that's the case, you're, might just be kicking a hornet's nest, all right? So, and then how would you enforce that, all right? So I think you really should consider, is this only for new contractor yards? Because there are a lot of existing ones out here with very successful businesses that probably never got a permit, or I don't know they need a permit. And who knows if they're complying or not with all these requirements, all right? So it's just applicability and how you enforce, is my question.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to speak on the contractor yards? All right, with that, I will close the public hearing and defer to my fellow commissioners. Gary, did you want to address the details that came up regarding the lot size and setbacks?
I can't. I have tables that I prepared with the recommended 250-foot setback, and I don't think Michelle has this available, but with a 250-foot setback, a 10-acre parcel, you'd only have like the half acre in the center of that parcel to be in effective use if it was a square parcel that's in regular shape and, you know, 258 feet is going to apply it much differently. As you move up to a 20-acre parcel, you get four acres of effective use. 25-acre parcel, you're up to six, seven acres. 30-acre parcel, you're at just under 10 acres. 50-acre parcel, then you're around 20 acres. So if you have a large parcel with 250-foot setback, isn't a huge hindrance because there are generally going to be limits placed by either the ordinance or the board on the amount of the property that can be used outside of the coverage storage and it's not going to be 20 acres like what happened. But for full clarity, for a 10-acre parcel, the 250 feet is a significant restriction. So somebody who comes into this wanting to do a very intensive use of a contractor's yard, a 10-acre parcel is probably not going to cut it. And that's okay. A 10-acre parcel is probably not appropriate for the most intense type of contractor's yard. A bigger parcel might be able to make for most of that.
So we can make these numbers work as were advertised?
Yes, just with the understanding that the minimum-sized parcel provides a very minimal footprint that would be available for the contractor's yard that is 250 feet away from every property. And so somebody with that minimal parcel is going to have a minimum latitude on how to use that parcel. So only the large parcel has a lot more latitude. And likely the impact of neighbors is going to be not as much because they have all that land.
Mr. Currie, some of those you've showed, I can't remember what it was, the amount of approved contractor lots that are in the county right now.
Four.
Four, okay. I thought it was six.
It's around five, let's go.
Well, and I think one's so long your own business.
Right.
The pool place, so I think it's like four.
And that's the larger contractor's shop yard, not small business contracting at somebody's residence.
Yeah, I think that's a key point that we haven't really brought up in this. I mean, it's in the recommendation, but all of this does not apply to the category A, which is those that are co-located with their residents, right? I mean, none of this, none of these.
This can be located under the residents, but isn't, doesn't have to be. The other smaller version must be co-located with the residents. You know, you park your back over your truck and one out there, but it's very tight on what you're allowed to do because it might be able to go onto other residents.
So I'm not sure how this would, how does A, okay, there must be a small bit, so other than whether your home is located there, what's the difference between getting, what are the different triggers that get you into A versus E? Maybe I just missed that. What's the, is the, is the small contracting business?
It's level intensity, so the intensity increase for the contractor's shop.
I know, but how's that measured? How does that get treated?
There is, you know, before it was pretty, pretty well lined up with a 20,000 square feet, 10,000 square feet. We can reduce the ordinance if you'd like for small contracting.
Well, I felt like I understood the logic to be E only applies to places that you don't also live, and if you also live there, A applies and E does not. Now I'm questioning that understanding and no longer understanding how building your house there changes anything.
To the additional standards for small contracting business, the minimum lot size requirement shall generally be five acres, if in a resource preservation, which is accurate.
Okay, so that's just remains the same and it's not here because we're not changing it?
We're not changing anything, so all that remains the same. So what happens, and then it goes on to not more than five vehicles. What if you want, what if you have a contractor's business that has six vehicles?
That kicks you.
You can't do the small contracting business. You need some other ability to do that business in the county, it could be a contractor's office shop yard.
I understand, same principle.
If you graduate to the big contractor's yard, there are more restrictions on you. You have a 250-foot setback, you have to review the roads to make sure your sized vehicle can get down in and turn any entrance, you have to do the noise, odor, dust, you have to make sure your contractors, it's all this.
So it's the same structural principle that we used to have for the three different levels, but it's, that was just two, and because one of them's not described here, it wasn't obvious.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
That's all right.
Because it's not being changed.
It's not going to change, yeah, okay. I'm not sure, Mary Chilton, if you are looking for discussion at this point.
A discussion would be great, thoughts on this? And I mean, I do believe that there are quite a few businesses in the county that operate this way but predate the zoning ordinance, so they won't be affected by these changes.
Either predate the zoning or predate the contractor's shop yard or put it in.
Yeah, my one, in my, in my day job, I know that this kind of provision for like power plants means that old power plants never go away because you never get subject to any new requirements. And I wonder if there, and I wonder if there's a way to do anything about that in terms of what level of change would constitute a new, a new operation? Is that, is that implied in any way? Is there something we can do on that?
State code does fairly generously provide vested rights to people who have been doing, who started their, their use before the locality book rules or started their use under old locality rules and then the locality change rules, which is this situation, right? Maybe they got permitted under contractor's office shop yard before when there were no conditions listed at all, but there might be conditions and they're a special exception, right? And now the board puts in these new rules, they don't have to follow. Even if there was never a permit issued, if a business operated for a period of 15 years and paid taxes on that, that's another way they could potentially be vested. And so the state's pretty generous in that vesting space.
And does that, does that in any way change with, if a parcel or it changes ownership?
If it's, if it's, if it's in existing non-conforming use, they get to do it with their grandfather, for lack of a better word, if they stop doing that thing for two years, they lose that grandfather.
But that's the only way it resets, yeah.
Have to change the nature of their business?
I think there's gray, all kinds of gray in there that ultimately would be ruled on by that person that's up there.
I don't know if we ever discussed this or not, but I missed it or whatever, but these junkyards and so forth that predated and their grandfather and whatever, is there any way that the county could have the requirement for screening down on some of those because quite frankly, some of those are very unsightly.
Yeah, probably not, other than a partnership.
It's the same issue we have with the more stringent requirements, we just have no legal authority to go back.
It's like the billboards.
Yeah, it actually adds value to keeping them, yeah.
Billboards are what they are.
Well, if we're ready to move on from that seemingly hopeless challenge, I think the point based about no inoperable vehicles does seem a bit broadly defined unless inoper, I was looking at the definition of inoperable, I mean, maybe there's a magic interplay of these things, Gary, that you can, or Michelle, that you can refer to, but, I mean, is it, is, to the question that was asked, if I have, you know, two temporarily inoperable tractors and am I out of compliance? It seems with according to this that you could, you could technically, if somehow the company could catch you and was so inclined to bring that in, but is it really the intention that, that at some point, if they're there long enough to be, to meet the definition of a graveyard and junkyard, that that's how that's prevented? Is that, is that kind of logic? So if you, because I, I do think that's a valid concern. I really don't cherish the idea of trying to define what inoperable means, but it does seem like a valid concern.
I think the planning commission has some good discussion on the valid for parts, vehicles, and equipment particularly literally in the contractor's yard type setting. And ultimately, I think it falls on the zoning administrator to review a situation, determine whether that piece of equipment is, has a tree grown through the level of it is.
Could we insert hopelessly inoperable? Could we add hopelessly?
Yeah, you know, and, and the burden is, is, can an enforcement action be made that satisfies the scrutiny of the court? And the county certainly does not want to bring frivolous cases to, to the court and throw them back in their laps. And so it has to be very careful with that avenue that, you know, if there's a skid steer that hasn't been working for two weeks, I think we would, we wouldn't touch that at all, particularly if they have a tractor that's using the skid steer. But if all of a sudden, you know, 10 skid steers of various repairers show up on site and get placed in the back area, there may be conversations about that. They don't have a good, good plan for why you have 10 each and everything and actually don't actually use those pieces of equipment for your business.
I just want to say as a board member that's talked to staff many times over the years about zoning violations, the mantra of our staff is, all we want is compliance. So if you tell us that you have ordered a part and the part will be here in eight weeks and it will be fixed in 12 weeks, you are on the road to compliance. And I don't think that staff would waste taxpayers' dollars, their own or our time, running in circles for 12 weeks over something that's going to resolve itself.
Or the whole staff.
Yeah, there you go. So.
The, the big safety net here is the 20,000 square feet.
Yeah.
That's the big safety net, right there. That's the big safety net right there. Half an acre is not a lot. And in and of itself, that's, that's a big control.
For a ten acre park.
Any, was, any, so that's still twenty thousand square feet, there should go on.
Oh, oh, that's for the.
Uncovered storage.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Yeah, so if you've got twenty acres, it's still twenty thousand square feet.
Covered by, oh no, that's covered though.
But it's covered, it's ten thousand square feet, that's the max coverage you can have.
Yeah, ten thousand square foot building, open all your contractor stuff and a twenty thousand square foot gravel area, open all your contractor stuff. That's it.
Yeah, but these are both covered structures. These don't, these wouldn't apply to open area where junk stuff is stored, would they?
Outdoor storage is not covered, outdoor.
Yeah, so it wouldn't help you for the ten junk or.
No, no, that's, that's out, outdoor storage.
Sorry.
It's not in a building. The distinction is outdoor storage versus covered storage.
And where is outdoor storage covered in the, in the E?
Not to exceed twenty thousand square feet.
Oh, sorry, outdoor storage, there we go.
Where it's covered in, that's Mexican, that's covered, covered.
All right, I'm gonna give up.
So whether it's twenty thousand square feet lawn mowers or twenty thousand square feet of broken scalps, pickups or heavy equipment, I, I, I don't think we should get into counting cars and trucks, we've got twenty thousand square feet.
I got you, I was just wondering, now I'm wondering if.
And we, we said we're not, and we shouldn't have a policy as well, we're not gonna, you know, enforce. We shouldn't even say that, we just say you got, it should be twenty thousand square feet. You get outside of twenty thousand square feet, we're gonna enforce it. We're gonna be on you, you got twenty thousand square feet to do your deed in. Get outside of that, we're coming. That's a easy way that you can enforce it, it's plain, it's an easy interpretation, I think.
Yeah, I'm tempted to suggest that we say the total area used for outdoor storage instead of covered by outdoor storage, but, uh.
I don't like that.
I don't know if that's within the realm of our flexibility, given what we advertised, I guess.
All right, well, we all know that this is the language that the board wanted, so I, I see no reason why we shouldn't send it back up to the board.
Would you, would you indulge my tweak?
Yes, I think that's fine. Anything that makes it not void ab initio is fine with me because to recap the theme, we don't want to have to advertise this thing three times.
You got to say something, Gary, you're laying on this.
I thought there was a motion.
No, I did, oh no, I did, the tweak was instead of covered by, used for, outdoor storage. To avoid the confusion that I was subject to because I thought covered storage and it means basically uncovered storage. So we're gonna replace the total area covered by outdoor storage with the total area used for outdoor storage.
Covered by uncovered storage.
Exactly, leave me alone.
So is that a motion to send it to the board supervisors with that change?
I will be helpful and make that motion.
Thank you, we have a motion on the table, do we have a second?
Certainly.
Thank you, Al. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right. That takes us to the public comment portion of the evening. Anyone that wishes to speak to the commission, please come to the microphone and, uh, state your name and the district in which you reside, as you did previously.
John Capielli Hampton. I'm a little bit confused with uncovered, covered by self and by what Mr. Curry added. For instance, my lot is eighteen acres. I own the three and a half next door too, so if I need to add it to make it twenty, I can. My setback currently, because Mr. Henry helped me with this once upon a time, on defining and having a map done, is nine hundred feet back from the road. I am two hundred and fifty feet from the property line on the side. I am two hundred, I'm almost three hundred feet from the property line in the back. And I guess the side doesn't matter because I own that too. But if I went to the other side of that three and a half acres, I'm probably six hundred feet. That gives me approximately two acres that we had mapped out and built. And then recently, Mr. Henry and Mr. White were talking about a mere twenty, I know a mere, twenty thousand square feet, as you said, once upon a time. I know people have gardens, vegetable gardens that are bigger than that. Mine's like five thousand square feet. So there may be some confusion moving forward with this. Other than that, or with that said, I applaud you for coming from where this started to where your vote has just brought us to. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Anyone else?
Karen Hunt, Jackson District. Regarding the proposed transient lodging ordinance changes, there is language regarding changes to the additional standards for a travel trailer park, the road requirements, um, that I, uh, suggest should be carefully considered. On page two of the draft document, a travel trailer is defined as a chassis vehicle up to forty-five hundred pounds and up to twenty-nine feet in length. Our current ordinance requires travel trailer parks to have a two hundred foot road frontage requirement on a state maintained road with a minimum paved width of twenty feet. It's being proposed to remove that current frontage and pavement requirements and instead allow traveler, travel trailer parks on private or public roads other than primary, secondary roads, and that these roads only be required to meet the type-two road standards. Whether private or state maintained, this could potentially add significant maintenance impacts and safety considerations to our roads. A type-two road has a twelve-foot minimum width and a two-foot minimum shoulder requirement. While that may allow for two standard vehicles to pass, twelve feet is not sufficient width for two large travel trailers to safely pass each other. Many of our smaller roads can be windy with line of sight and topographical, uh, challenges for standard vehicle traffic that they serve now. I've heard often in public comment from people who cite maintenance and safety concerns when there's a special, um, exception use under consideration, that they talk about increased traffic from standard cars and trucks. And so I'm wondering, do we want to be allowing what could be large, heavy travel trailers on our small and narrow gravel roads when they, whether they be public or private? The current requirements of a two hundred foot road frontage requirement on a state maintained road with a minimum paved width of twenty feet better protects our roads and all who travel them. Um, and I just ask the, the commission to carefully consider the implications of changing this road requirement with regard, regard to the tri, trailer, travel trailer parks. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Anyone else wishing to speak?
John Capielli, uh, Hampton, I want to put two pieces into that for factual information. The Department of Transportation maximum legal width on a trailer, tractor trailer, travel trailer, anything like that, horse trailer, is one hundred and one inches. There are no oversized camper trailers. They're a hundred and one inches, period, that's it, end of story. They don't make them any bigger. I'm more concerned, and most travel trailers are actually light, they're paper light. I've seen them blow apart in windstorms going down the road in Oklahoma. I'm more worried about these women that are, and it's not a women thing, but you'll understand in a moment, that are five foot one, a hundred and twenty pounds, driving the F-350 duly, hauling the thirty-foot six-horse trailer down after the fox hunt. The other day out here on Richmond Road, they had the fox hunt. I'm going down the road in my pickup truck, which is a duly. And they're all over the road as they're piling out because we're all in a rush to get out. That was more dangerous than you can possibly imagine. I pulled off the road down in the ditch and waited for like eight vehicles to come past me. I live on two eleven. I see more campers than normal residents do because they're coming up and down two eleven, trying to get out to, to the mountain, to Luray, to the caverns, to the, to the national park. And there's some retired person that can't see over the hood and they've got a thirty-five foot trailer on one axle, which is way too light, and they're doing seventy to get up the hill in front of my house. But they're riding both lanes. So if we're concerned about how big these things are, the facts are. They're going slow on, on, on the class one twelve-feet wide roads. They're only so wide. And I'm more worried about the people that are coming with their horse trailers that don't know where they're going. Thank you.
Thanks, anyone else wishing to speak?
Thanks. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. Is there anyone else that would like to make comment and public comment? And without, I'll close the public comment. That takes us to item F, old business ordinance transient lodging discussion. Um, and I know the county attorney and staff did review this. Would you all be able to walk us through?
Yeah, we, we gave a lot of changes. When, when you open, you open the ordinance up, we want to make sure we touched everything uh, in those sections. Can you make any figure? And so, uh, some of us, myself and Mr. Goff went through this.
Which is the name of this document, Michelle?
It would be the second one.
Our twenty-five X X X?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We went through the version that, um, the planning commission came up with. And then, which got us to, uh, the changes that are shown here. From, not from planning, but from the existing code, just like you did. And first, for definitions, there, there was some confusion in the current code between a camping trailer, travel trailer. And when we trace those back to state code, both of those things are in state code, camping trailer and travel trailer. And they both fall into the category of recreational vehicle. So, uh, we thought it made the most sense because, uh, these parks are telling you to have the technical behind your vehicle as well as the thing that drives itself. Right? And has living accommodations on it. And, and we want that travel trailer park to fit the RV and the trailers. And so rather than travel trailer park, this ordinance changes it to a recreational vehicle park. And includes the typical RV that you would drive yourself, the camping trailer that you pull behind your vehicle, or the travel trailer that you pull up behind your vehicle. All different things, but they all collapse under recreational vehicle state code. And so we define what that is by the state code and by the reference to the state code. Very clear what those things are. Define recreational vehicle parks, uh, which is, rather than having a bunch of regulations in the definitions, it very simply is a transient lodging combination for recreational vehicles. And redefine a tent campground as transient lodging combination for tents. But each of those have some requirements, special requirements in later in the code, just like they do today. Uh, and so as you keep going down, get rid of travel trailer because it's, uh, you sort of, uh, record. And you see the use table. Another big confusion in the current ordinance is that we have uh, the use of conference center slash convention center. And we have conference center or resort. The distinction between those two current uses is one has lodging and one doesn't have lodging. So we thought around the table, well, maybe we should just say that. So we have now a conference center without lodging and a conference center with lodging. So the conference center without lodging is the same use as it's always been. And there are certain requirements for a number of acres. We didn't change any of that stuff. But, but based on what the planning commission had talked about for the other uses, we made the assumptions that the planning commission did not want those things in the conservation zone.
That is the ones with lodging.
No lodging is just you go there and you meet up and you go home.
Yep.
Maybe it's okay somewhere in an ag parcel if you, you know, mitigate all the impacts, but you know, they don't cover the conservation. And then in recreation and amusement, we have country and retreat or lodge. And then the conference center or resort, which is conference center with lodging. Those aren't recreation and amusement uses. Those are commercial uses. So we said, let's take those out of recreation and amusement and put them into commercial. And you can see when they're slid down into commercial, they have the new name of conference center with lodging. Both of those only allow in agriculture because inherently the definition is, uh, lodging in a rural area. For country and retreat or lodge, and then it's up to forty people. And then the conference center with lodging is over forty people. And they have different level intensity, different special requirements. But not the object conservation as it used to be when they were in the recreation and amusement uses. Tent campground stays as a recreation and amusement use. It is allowed in conservation, which makes sense. Tent campground can't have RVs in a tent campground that today or under proposed changes. So in conservation, maybe that makes sense. The recreational vehicle park, you cannot have that in conservation. The thing, let's see, so, um, also make clear that site plans aren't required for both country and retreat of lodge and conference center with lodging, as well as regular conference center without lodging. But aren't required for a tourist couple. A full site plan. You normally require maybe a little sketch or something like that. But you don't require a full site plan for any tourist couple. I don't rely on that. An engineered site plan for a tourist couple. So that could be changed if you felt it. This, this document, I, we kept the general standards in just in case the commission wanted to look at them while they're looking at the rest of the documents. So moving into public and quasi-public uses, it's just a name change for conference centers without lodging. And then moving down into category four, recreation and amusement. It strips out the country and retreats and lodges and just moves that down to the other section. So for tent campground, you can see the recommended changes and the wording. The minimum acreage requirement, seventy-two acres. We mimic that and then in the other section, all the former amusement park. Where they were silent. Recreational vehicles are not allowed in a tent campground. The only permanent structures allowed are, are single house occupied by the resident, owner or manager. Bath facilities, swimming facilities, such structures that are usual and customary for the use of tent campers. So presumably in most tent campers that I've stayed in, there might be a central bath house where the tenters can go to the bathroom and maybe take a shower. The way it was written before, you can't have that. You're only allowed to have the house. Uh, so we try to make that clear. Now, access, the facility shall have direct access by means of travel, weigh twenty feet in width. The road currently maintained by the state. Here, we chose to, we followed what the, the planning commission said before and changed that to a type two. This is for a tent campground. These are cars showing up with their tents. Don't really need a super special road for those. Tent sites shall not be occupied by the same occupants for more than thirty consecutive days. This is not a place to live, which can be a problem. So that was tents. And recreational vehicle park, which is taking the name of the travel trailer park, take down the definitions. You can have tents and recreational vehicle campers at case six. Before, we said they shall provide electric, oh, that's an individual site, and one or more central bathroom. Why? Why do they have to have that? They can, right? Not all sites need to be electric sites like these things. And I've been to many that have some that are electric and some that are just not. Depending on who wants to stay there. And we just aligned the rules. For the road frontage on this, we borrowed from the contractor yard language. Said, these might be placed in areas of primary highway. They might be requested somewhere deep back on a secondary road somewhere. And rather than saying the road needs to be twenty feet of pavement, if somebody wants to apply for one of these, you need to come in with your plan and explain to us the type of vehicles that are going to use it and why your location and the roads to get there are acceptable. You explain why as part of, part of the special exception application. And the planning commission can review your proposal on why it's okay. And that's what, what this section says, which is the same exact wording that was in the contractor's yard document you just had. Because it's going to vary based on, you're buried way down Turkey Ridge Road, you better have a really good explanation. Accessory, commercial uses are permitted. That's just the language. Didn't want to suggest that people were long-term residents. Density should not exceed three camping sites, breaker, didn't change that. But then the next one said that each campsite shall contain a minimum of three thousand square feet. Why do we care the size of the sites if we have the density requirement? Maybe they want to have smaller sites. Wouldn't that be better from an impact perspective?
Would there used to be a density requirement for tent camping?
No. None, if, if it were in a strip camp. Is that something we could consider? Uh, let's, let's be, mess up. But that would be, that would be something appropriate that, if there's twenty acres, maybe there shouldn't be eight sites. Uh, so rather than the minimum site, we put the minimum acreage consistent with the others. And that number could change if the planning commission called a different acreage should be allowed. But these are inherently in agriculture areas, not in commercial areas. So larger parcels as a threshold is important in order to reduce impacts to the neighbors. Uh, no structure camps or athletic facilities should look closer than a hundred feet to any. We just changed it to parcel boundaries for consistency wording. And technically, parcels aren't lots unless they're fifty, under fifty acres. Uh, number nine, uh, just cleaning up the wording of recreational vehicle. And thirty days, rather than two weeks, just to provide consistency and a time of transient lodging, which are over thirty days. And here kind of a whole time.
Mr. Curry, I, I like what you all did, and I don't need to interrupt with the, with the road. Taking out the road frontage requirement and adding the application should include a traffic management plan. But should there still not be a minimum requirement spelled out?
Well, that's, I guess goes back to the debate that the board had with the contractor's yards on some of the, you know, fifty vehicles, sixty vehicles, appropriate number of vehicles. And for a special exception type use, those are all subjective. So the answer is yes, you could. You could say twenty feet minimum and you have to have this plan.
I just want to be consistent across all these uses.
Yeah, and, and in my mind, they can have a, they could get a recreational vehicle park where they say, we realize we're buried deep into the secondary road system in the middle of Castle Town. And because of that, part of our application and the conditions we accept prevail. We only accept class C RVs that are certain size or, I don't know, maybe a small. So the board could put a condition and say, okay, you can't have RVs longer than sixteen feet. And, and, and because of that, you know, because of your site, those are your conditions. And linked to that is your plan to show that the roads to your site can handle that small RV where if they couldn't handle big diesel pusher, class whatever that there. And so if you put a minimum, then, then that subjectivity might not be able to prevail. At the same time, if you put a minimum, that's full protection. The board thinks that that's the most important thing, say, hey, there's not twenty feet of pavement. We just don't want one of these things around. That you can do that and it would just cut those areas off. So it's, it's certainly optional.
Okay.
So then that next section N is just, was moved to the commercial section. If we look down into the commercial section, we can see, uh, country and retreats and lodges was put back in. And I apologize that it might be hard to track changes because this is all new. Uh, so you might have to flip back to where country ends and lodges were before on line one fifty-four just to validate what changes have been made. So number one, used to say the minimum size of the park should be twenty acres. And now it says the minimum acreage required, not the size of the park, acres, park should be twenty acres. Uh, number two, let's see, the structure of a campsite or athletic facility should look in closer than ten feet. Remember, you guys changed that to a hundred. And so this is now changed into a hundred. Number three, no permit should be issued for such use until the applicant has furnished evidence that they need the acreage requirement. And so it's, uh, definitely that might be a good condition for the tent and campground and recreational vehicle park.
The health requirements.
Four, parking and loading areas, swimming pools and tents where should be effectively screened. You know, we were of a mind to say that getting to that rule with that subjectivity of effectively screening, maybe, maybe you need to hit that in other ways. From the, from the site perspective, and we didn't include that. And that's something that you need to consider.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, understand the challenges of defining effective, but that's a.
Well, so maybe you want to step back or something.
I mean, I, I, having something that addresses, I mean, to the point earlier. I'm not a big fan of bright lines where, you know, two hundred means one thing and two hundred and one means another. But I think having the, the thing, the, you know, the visibility and, and some kind of screening in the ordinance is both a reminder and it kind of clarifies.
So what is so important about parking, loading, swimming pools, tennis courts?
Yeah, I'm not even sure where that, I'm not even sure where that language, that's from up in the top.
Yeah, that's what it used to say. You only have to effectively screen the parking, loading, swimming pools. The actual, you know, building, you don't have to screen that. You only have to screen the swimming pool. And it just seemed out of place.
It, it seemed like a rough edge. I mean, I, I guess it seemed like where you were going was you might reintroduce some more general language about that.
All falls into these are special exception uses. You have to come to the planning commission, explain why your use and the impacts from your use on the neighbors, you know, are, are going to be mitigated by conditions to the permit. What are those going to be? It's up to the applicant to explain why this extra special use in this location is okay and can fit in with the by rights. And that's part of that subjectivity that has to happen during, during the proposals. And we also look back at the general standards. And I think, uh, found, thinking more about this. A says that the gross use shall be such that it will not be, it will not adversely affect the user development of nature properties and shall be of course, as a location size, thanks to all the structural expenses. And the nature and extended screening buffering landscaping shall be such that the use shall not hinder or discourage appropriate development and or use of adjacent nearby land and or buildings or impair the damage thereof. And one seventy fifty-two A, pretty much.
Gives you that. Yeah, perfect.
Why are we worried about schooling?
Yeah.
Because it seems like.
Yeah, no, I, I'm with you on that.
The next section was, no case of density development is measured by da, da, da. And we, that just changed, stated, say, no case of density development is measured by two-person, two minutes, two-day veterans campsites, cabins, bunk beds, jumpsery. It's a, it is performed by per se. Country and retreats lodge should not exceed maximum twenty units of accommodations. That's the same thing. And then, uh, then when it came to roads, the planning commission said, you gotta have a type two road. And we said, geez, I don't think so. This is a pretty intense use. Country and retreats or lodge should have direct access to a public road. Should this transient lodging use up to forty people, should it be allowed on a private road? We have a hard enough time getting the community to buy onto the course on a private road. And now we're talking about occupancy of forty on a private road? We just thought that really needed to be on a public road.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
This would add additional standards for conference centers with lodging. We just cleaned up that language. And you have to compare that back to line two thirteen. So it used to say, in a case of density and development, the, uh, whatever. That's now number two. And we threw in, then the acreage requirement should be twenty acres to be, just put all the others. And the planning commission can maybe decide that maybe the conference center with lodging, which is starts at more than forty, guests, maybe even bigger than forty. But then something you can, before there was no acreage requirement. But we had it for some of the less intense uses, which didn't make sense not to at least have it for the most intensive use outside of hotels, which are in commercial, which we would not have in commercial park. But it's meant to be in commercial. No structure accessible to guests, the facility should be located closer than a hundred feet to any property. And, and we kept that the same, but we were asking ourselves what differences am I going to have with accessible to the guests? Should it be no structure? If we're worried about impacts to the neighbors, uh, does it matter whether the structure is accessible to the guests? I mean, if you have a building of just staff in it, so can it be just fifty feet from the neighbors? Does that would be the normal by right? We weren't really sure what the distinction of the guests would, would be carried at that same time. And then no permit should be issued unless the public park should be just carried.
And then what's the road standard for a conference center with lodging?
Uh, that's a good question. Probably should be the same as the E plus.
That's what I would say too.
Absolutely.
So that would be five?
Yeah. So I guess, you know, we, we first tried to tiptoe our way through some of the recommendations. And we thought, you know, we're going to check this thing.
Applaud you.
We had.
Well, I've, I'll allow it, but with the understanding that it opens a whole nother public comment period for everyone.
Well, I just wanted to listen to this as a frequent RVer. I don't know how many of you do that. But for example, a class A three bus is far more reliable than my diesel pickup truck with a thirty-foot trailer behind it. Sure. So I, I, there's some inconsistencies in what you did. And you need to get some advice from someone that's more bent parts. The other thing that you'll see in RV parks is they will have cabins, tents and RVs. And they have amusement areas. And more than anything, you need to put a light and noise limitation on it at a given time, because that happens. That's the biggest complaint.
I think that would be captured under general standards. You know, that we can impose restrictions under general standards, which Mr. Curry read out. I don't, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. I agree with you that light and noise are an issue, but we can, we can get there another way that already exists.
I also feel like the way this is structured, something that had accommodations other than RVs or tents wouldn't be permitted.
Right. That is correct. And so if, if they, and they weren't allowed under, aren't allowed currently.
Yeah.
If, uh, in, you know, many, particularly state parks, they had yurts and cabins. The old civilian conservation board cabins that you rent in this area and then over there is a tent area. And then over this other areas where the RVs and recreational vehicles, transport trinketers are. Do, do, do we want to open that up to that kind of use? We don't have any of, any of the things, but, uh.
Well, it may be one of those things that if someone proposes it, at some point, we might have to work through those details at that time.
But it's prohibited now. We can see there are only certain structures you're allowed to have at that recreational vehicle park. And, and one of those allowable things are not cabins.
Right.
For the guests. Regarding the, the vehicles, right now, it's just, it's, show me the plan that works for your site for the type of vehicles that you're going to track. It's up to the applicant to show us why it's going to work. If there are, if there's additional language that's added like twenty feet or this or that, then, then the specifics of the vehicles might get be more important.
Are there any, are there any other members of the public that would like to speak?
If you realize these things don't require a commercial license. That's your driving on it, yeah.
We're not the DMV. We're the planning commission.
So could I, are you going to want to close that artificial or?
I guess we'll, we'll acknowledge that, that, that the additional public comment period has come to an end.
You know, uh, here, Gary, hearing your comments about the site plan was deja vu over the whole site plan discussion around the other ordinances. Are those, I guess we're doing these things in a parallel track. And if we do something later that changes all the site plan requirements, we'll just have to revisit everything, right? There's no way, there's no way of anticipating.
What is, what is a site?
What is a site plan and?
All that stuff's modeled from our, you know, so. But it, right now, a site plan is a full engineered plan. However, for uses that are, that are special exception, the planning commission can waive certain requirements. For things that are by right, the zoning industry can waive certain, it's like, it requires curbing gut. There'll be a lot of, uh, uses that have curbing gut. So, and we can, we can waive that pretty comfortably in most. So we can waive that pretty comfortably in most use now. Certain commercial situations, there might be a need to do that.
Yeah, I guess.
So do you, the site plan has very, just 170 and 120, and it has a whole list of things that you need to do. And all the applications that I've seen for a tourist home or bed and breakfast, we haven't come anywhere near that. And the only one we may ever really needed it for might be, you know, the tourist home in Little Sperryville that's being under construction, which is by right use. And none of these, none of the special requirements apply to it because it's by right use.
Yeah, I guess I was just reminded, and I know there was a lot of moving pieces in that conversation, but I actually thought the progress we were making at the recommendation of Berkeley Group on the varying degrees of site plan was productive stuff and useful.
That's on a very far distant back burner that I've been told is allowed to sit forever until somebody mentions it again.
I just mentioned it.
It crossed my mind too, Gary, so it's okay. And I had, I had broached it maybe six months ago at the board level and I got no response. So I don't think there's any desire by my fellow board members to engage in that long -wearing work. It's died as a board. Yes.
It may come back to that someday.
And maybe not. But I just, I do want to say that this, this work is important to me, and you all have heard this before, but the whole eco-retreat village that came about in Piedmont District last year really brought to light to me the inconsistencies in this part of the ordinance. And in particular, when the citizen text amendment request came up for allowing tourist homes on an unpaved road, really wanted to reconcile some of the inconsistencies in this language so that even if the complete review of the ordinance isn't moving forward, this portion is improved, which is an important portion of very intense uses that people have strong feelings about.
Yeah, I'm by no means suggesting that we should postpone this until we get back to that.
Thank you.
I was just reminded of it and made me wonder about it.
No, I thought of it too. Anyone else?
The tent, the tent campsites are tent campground part of the site plan. Just me, if that's my property, I don't want those moving all over the place. I'm not only killing property.
Yeah, I feel like how we, I feel like how we did that, similar things is like it's a, it's kind of a general area. It's a general area, not.
That comes back to the level of.
Specificity, yes.
Well, I think it comes down to, it's a special exception. And so the condition that binds the site plan submitted as part of the special exception to that approval, if there was value placed on site moving around, and that could be part of that condition. Or if there were value on these are the sites, people would love to be the sites, then that's definitely a condition. And that's something that can happen as a condition of the special exceptions to make that use compatible with an area. And what might be good in one site might be, you know, detrimental in a different site.
I think it's a less intensive use of a travel park or RV.
Can I follow up? They always have more than one intensity use of RV parks.
I just think that those requirements of 20 acres for tent campgrounds could be reduced and maybe to even that out, reduce the density from four per acre or two per acre to, you know, the same result. It opens up, it opens up more of somebody in Chester Gap to be able to do something like that. It's a lot of thick.
Well, Chester Gap's not allowed at XO properties. In the periphery of Chester, possibly even more.
And they're driving on our roads in Grand County. I mean, we're talking campsites. You know, you're a mile away from a little wayside up there. It's got just a wooden roof, a wooden floor.
The Apple TV and the theater.
So. Are all of Chester Gap residential?
They're most, what are they?
All of them?
Pretty much all of them. I think it was.
Yeah. It was meant to be.
So they, the lodge are like an eight acre each or something.
Because there were ten to be campgrounds.
Yeah.
It seems kind of odd that we got away from that.
I think the 20 acres is probably a good size. It will help from having complaints from neighbors who gives them added buffer area. And it was the old adage of you had 25 acre zoning, so, which is not exactly true, of course, but this allows in some smaller properties. And you'll have a few of these, but I think it's good to have. That's the minimum stuff with 10 acres.
Well, this is quite a few changes, so I imagine we'll want to review things again before we advertise it for a public hearing.
I'm not ready to move that.
Okay.
I think it's helpful.
I think it's good work and it's shaping up nicely. That takes us on to data centers. I don't have anything to add. Ironically, I have been following data centers, fights against data centers in the Midwest. The first step is usually to take them out of the zoning ordinance. So it's been interesting to watch that rule out. No new information from the board supervisors. Anything additional for discussion? All right, motion to adjourn. Our next regular meeting is December 18th. Motion to adjourn.
So move.
All right, second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Axence. Have a good night, everybody be safe.